Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council and Town Manager Budget Workshop, February 22 at 6:00 p.m. Tonight we will review where we left off from our last meeting. So I hand it over to Carl.
All right. As a follow-up to our last meeting, there was a request for additional detail on what comprised the library's budget request. So what is going around now is additional detail that makes up the individual buckets that were within the library's larger request that was proposed to be funded at $820,000. So you can see where the funding was for '21, '22, what the original request was when it came in at '22, '23, and then when it says 2% adjustment at the top on the heading, that's to take the personnel expense back down in line with collective bargaining agreements, which form the basis of what's in the budget for '22, '23. The other line items include materials, which is a reduction. As I said last time, materials is lending materials, so that would be periodicals, DVDs, things of that nature, and as magazines go out of production or shift to online platforms and with the increased interest in streaming services, there is a reduction in where materials are. Utilities is just that, so there's projected decrease. Maintenance is interior maintenance of the building. Automation, I noted, was an increase previously. That was two new softwares proposed to be purchased to deal with circulation, as well as patron details and card catalog, which gives you the total expense, total budget, less the income generated by the library itself, less dollars coming out of the library's reserve system, leaves you with the proposed request at $823.19. So let's clean up of our last meeting. The first budget to be reviewed tonight is water pollution control. So the budget here is, the largest line item is salaries. This is for a part-time unionized position, which is responsible for following up and making sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing with their septic systems. Professional Services supports an engineer who helps the commission with its ongoing works, so that's a regular reserve that's set aside based on professional contract with a long-time vendor. Then you've got three line items associated with water quality testing, so it's surface water testing, well monitoring, and state water testing. So those are all different locations, monitoring the landfill, things of that nature. General Supplies is once we have the position filled for what's needed to send out reminders and mailers to folks telling them to maintain their septic system. And then the last line item is our partnership to help fund the pump-out boat to help control the release of wastewater into Long Island Sound and Clinton Harbor. If there aren't any questions on water pollution control, next up would be Park and Rec. So largest cost center here again is full-time salaries. You're funding a director and the assistant to the director in the full-time line, part-time line, funds a number of seasonal employees associated chiefly with the beach. There was a request at the department level to have people get both increase in salary to stay competitive with the market and the increase in minimum wage, as well as increasing hours or weeks that they would be working at the beach. The original request was for 14 weeks. This is a similar request as was made last year. I took that back down to 12, which has been our standard operating for a while now, but left the wage increases in as proposed by the department to make sure we are competitive with our surrounding municipalities, make sure that we can retain staff necessary to support keeping our amenities open. Overtime is just that. That's a small amount of overtime for the assistant. Travel expense is associated with the maintenance staff of the department, as well as the director. Repairs and maintenance is part of the ongoing operations and maintenance of the different amenities that are available. There are a number of projects that need to be done. Request came in at $40,000. I took that down to $37,500 based on historical spend rates, as well as the fact that there's a substantial balance in that line item this far through the fiscal year, and it would seem as if those projects, some projects could get picked up in the current fiscal year with the amount of funds that are available in that particular line item. General Maintenance is more of a catch-all line. That's in at $4,000. On the equipment line at $5,000, it's more of an operating capital expense to replace picnic benches and bring them up with more current safe equipment. Special Events, some of this included funding for the Jazzercise program that was offered here. That was really meant to be more of a senior program expense, but for one reason or the other, it was previously buried in Park and Rec, even though Park and Rec had no involvement in it. So it has been pulled out here, which allowed for increased funding under the senior program. If we wanted to offer Jazzercise, I think the department could offer it effectively also, perhaps at a different cost model than what was done here previously. And with the onset of COVID, the Jazzercise program in and of itself rapidly collapsed in 2020. And then the last item is funding for Clinton Family Day. We are assuming that it will be going forward. Has not because of COVID. I think the planning expectation that we're at right now is by end of July, some sense of normalcy will return to how we do business and things that we've normally done, assuming there isn't some other variant we need to be worried about. Any questions on Park and Rec? Hearing none. Takes us to Harbor Management. So Harbor Management, at this point in time, is basically just a salary account for the Harbor Master and seasonal staff that work down in the marina. Previously, operating expenses associated with the harbor were stripped out and put in the Public Works Department. Those costs continue to be carried in the Public Works budget. The commission did have some discussion going into the budget season of looking to move some of those line items back into their budget and their desire to have funding unique to themselves within their own budget. They did not submit something in a timely fashion to have that appear before you, so you only have the salaries piece. And since it's buried in Public Works, I probably wouldn't have approved it anyways. So that's Harbor. Any questions on Harbor Management? Next is Shellfish. So Shellfish as presented is a little different now than what was presented in the past. In the past, it was a single line item. So we're trying to force that single line item to be broken up into multiple line items so we have better sense of where dollars are going and that there's a tighter accounting of how things are being spent, which is harder to see from a transparency standpoint when everything is shoved into one line item. So this breaks it out a little bit, and then there's a little bit of a deconstructing of prior years to try and line up as closely as possible, but we need a little bit more time with having line items broken out to have a real sense of budget history. But for your benefit, the travel expense is associated with taking samples of shellfish clams mainly from Clinton Harbor to various state labs, depending on what's open at the time. So that could be Orange or it could be Rocky Hill, so that we're reporting on what is in the clams that come out of the shellfish beds in town. The general maintenance line item is for consumables like boots or booties and any kind of gear. Office, or general supplies, office, this is for paper, for the licensing that of folks that go out shellfishing. It also helps pay for weather service. General, other supplies is fuel for the boat that gets used when they're out doing their appointed pounds. Miscellaneous expenses is other consumables. I took that down to be more reflective of where things have been in the past, a $300 cut. The largest line item is purchase of seed stock of clams to reseed Clinton Harbor so that there are actually shellfish to be harvested and taken out as we try and make it an attractive location. An enforcement stipend was proposed last year, and I cut it. It's been proposed again, and I cut it again. The request is to provide stipend for Harbor Committee, or Shellfish Commission members to go out and give them an additional incentive for policing of the shellfish beds. This is in violation of ordinance and charter, where the only board that gets paid is the Town Council. No one else gets paid for their voluntary service. If there aren't any questions on Shellfish, we can move somewhat quickly through the next two. So Health is CRAD. That's our membership in the Regional Health Department. That's our share for participating in the regional structure of the Health Department, which is paying for both public health and sanitary services. So public health obviously has been heavily emphasized during the COVID times, but normally their book, Bread and Butter, is helping make sure contracting moves forward throughout the community and any enforcement inspections that have to be done at a variety of facilities in Clinton, providing food, daycares, and personal services, nail salons, hair salons, and the like. Probate, again, is our pro-rata share of the Regional Probate District. So the probate judge.
Carl, can I ask you a question about CRAD? Do we ever get any sort of an accounting of the number of tests, inspections, everything that they've done for Clinton in the course of a year? Do they ever give any sort of feedback on where they are primarily, I mean, what they do for us, what we?
What we get for our money?
I would say it's a yes or no question.
Other than what we receive for the annual report, I haven't seen a report to that effect. I don't imagine it would be difficult if you wanted quantified numbers to get that out of them.
It would be very helpful to see an audit of what they, what services they perform. Because, you know, I know that they're responsible for restaurants and hair salons and stuff, but I'd like to know how many they actually get to and how often and.
Some by statute are required to be inspected annually. Others are like the fire marshal where it's on a rotating basis, but I will get whatever I can get out of CRAD to quantify the services provided. Probate is our pro-rata share of the Regional Probate Court. Town-level probate courts were consolidated by the state a number of years ago, so this is a shared service with a judge to handle name changes, probate wills, conservatorships, and the like. Don't have a report from Probate Court on how much they do for Clinton either. Water hydrants is next. So this line item pays for the utility expense for providing fire hydrants with the Connecticut Water Company. So it is trending to go up, which is based on the fire department seeking additional hydrant installations as the water company is upgrading their service across town, which provides an opportunity for the fire department to increase their capacity to deliver water in the event of an incident in the area serviced by the water company. So there were some add-ons that will go into effect for the fiscal year we're in right now. I took it up from where the department request is, which is basically the finance department putting together that number to be more reflective of potential expansions that the fire chief is looking at, depending on schedule that the water company can accommodate within the fiscal year for where they're going to be going with water line expenditure. Next is streetlight. So this pays for, at this point singularly, the utility expense associated with streetlights previously, and it was higher because we were financing a lease for upgrading the streetlights from the normal incandescent bulb to LEDs, which are more energy efficient, and rather than having the utility company do it, we took it on. So you see there's a drop from prior years, and we're realizing now that we're beyond the lease period, we're realizing some savings. We did purchase electricity as a commodity during COVID last year, so that locks in our electricity price for a few more years before we have to worry about shopping electricity as a commodity. So there's not much more left in that line item. Next is General Government Administration. So there's a lot in here. So quickly going through what's on the page, so at the top were a series of community donations that were requested. As you'll see, historically, the last year that those donations were approved was FY1718. A lot of those fell off as time went on and got cut out of the budget, which left us with fees for service, which go towards other entities that are delivering services for us. So first up is Medsex Paramedic. This is the Advanced Life Support Intercept that supports local EMS. So that's, that's based on a fixed contract, which goes to the council for endorsement every year. Contingency is a general reserve account for the town in the event of having to fund something that is unforeseen and unbudgeted so that we have some financial flexibility. So in the past, you know, in the budget history, that's the actuals, but we've always maintained a strong contingency line to respond to issues that may crop up. Conservation Commission is in next. There is a little bit of daylight between their request and what I'm putting forward. So their request included a fee for service to an entity that would collect food scraps and truck that to a digester in Southington. The actual cost of that service is more than the tonnage of waste it would divert, so I cut it out as it didn't make a lot of financial sense. Food scrap recycling could be accommodated within the town's dump by incorporating it in the leaf compost after we get a permit from DEEP to do that. So you kind of get to the same end at a slightly more cost-efficient model than relying on the current monopoly of really one vendor to truck it away and one digester to accept it. Certainly makes zero financial sense for us to be trucking our waste to Southington financially, so it's a way to get to the same end without utilizing an outside vendor. And while we all wait for the state to make a policy relative to solid waste, at best we're chipping away at the edges so that there's a small volume of waste that can be incorporated in with leaves instead of paying a vendor. Hazardous Waste Site, this is our participation in the COGS, Household Hazardous Waste Collection. So I reported previously that there's a change in model on this one, where we were paying, a certain amount of our fee went into paying for a host site, which was in Essex, and then we would also pay for a satellite collection that would take place in Clinton. The host site collection in Essex seemed to make less and less financial sense. The COG made a decision at its last meeting to move away from the fixed site collection of Essex and then just have a series of satellites across the region. So with that change, there is the potential to reduce this line item by a small amount, and we're in the process of trying to get you a number that may make some sense so that you can at least, we would still continue to participate, you'd still have a regional collection in Clinton. Given the fact that we've always had a regional collection, it seems as if we've had some strong participation on pulling household hazardous waste out of the town. Next line is Under Conference of Municipal. That is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, CCM, which is the major municipal lobbying education group in the state. Their fee, their fee has been flat for a number of years now. Estuary Transit is our participation in what's nine-town transit, which provides the mass bus service in town, but also dial ride and something called extra mile, which is a deviated route. So it's not quite an Uber, but still lets people connect with best transit. Estuary Council of Seniors is next up. This reflects participation in that program, which is at this point just really providing meals to folks in Clinton. CREPA is.
Can I ask a question about Estuary?
Yep.
Can we get any sort of an inventory of what the services are that they provide to us? I mean, in terms of meals, I mean, that's essentially what they're providing to Clinton, right? Is meals on wheels?
At this point, that's pretty much, I might have it in here. So 76 meals, or 76 individuals are serviced through the program, which delivers 11,000 meals. And then another 22 people utilize the congregate meals in Old Saybrook. Other services includes 13 individuals utilizing their services for medical trips to doctor's appointments.
When you say 13, that's 13 for the year?
Or 13 individuals are utilizing that service.
That regularly use it, or that's 13 trips?
13 individuals are using that service on a regular basis.
Okay, all right.
28 individuals utilized the Department of Health Services. 270 people are getting their publication. Spine folks are participating in exercise therapy programs. And then there's a pro-rata share towards whatever the share overhead is.
Thank you.
CREPA is actually the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments. Probably should be updated to reflect their name. Sets of participation in COG. Cost is Council Small Towns, which has also been a small advocacy program but aimed more at the specific agenda of small towns. They fit a niche that CCM sometimes misses with their emphasis focusing more on what could be construed as issues of larger municipalities. Judgments is a cost of a legal judgment that the town entered into a long time ago to provide bottled water to certain individuals. This reflects the cost of that service. 400 is in for the Tree Committee, 2,500 for the Tree Warden, which is his stipend. Historic District Commission put in funding requests to fund preparation of pictures for homes that have been historically preserved. The larger dollar amount at the request level envisioned of funding the signage that was asked for under ARPA, so it was more, if they weren't going to get it under ARPA, they wanted it out of tax dollars, so it's been cut because it's advanced through the ARPA process. Addition this year is a request from the Human Rights Committee of $300 for additional funding to provide for a bilingual brochure and then printing flyers. If there's no questions on General Government? So General Government Other, there's a lot in here. A lot of it is insurance and benefit related. So at the top, working our way down, Other Employee Benefits is a legacy benefit that's provided to certain employees. It is not eligible for newer employees, and as these folks continue their service with the town and then ultimately retire, you'll see this line item start to taper as time goes on. Employer Social Security Contribution is just it. That's our arm's share of paying into Social Security. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. This is a, OPEB is an accounting standard that was passed by the Government Accountability Standards Board. The request that's made of every municipality through its auditor is to quantify the cost of your post-employment benefits so that it's not on a pay-as-you-go basis, but you're basically setting up a reserve. Clinton set up a trust, but never really kind of funded that trust, as I noted previously. There really isn't another, there isn't a post-retirement's benefit package on the town side, and all that is really our liability that's calculated by the auditor is really something called implicit subsidy, which is when people get over 65, they should be in a different healthcare product, which is more expensive, that reflects perhaps a higher utilization rate than a younger employee who perhaps has a lower utilization rate. So it's more of an accounting process. Here, what we're funding is what was agreed to last year when we had the conversation around this, which is the maintenance expense for the trust. So it's paying for the actuary that does his calculation work and the investment advisor that's trying to invest the small amount of money that we have set up in the OPEB trust. So rather than taking those expenses out of the trust directly, which continues to shrink the size of the trust, which negates the point of grading it, this is a way to make sure that we're not cutting into the principal of the trust and we're funding our operating expenses for that particular program. State Retirement Contribution is the town's contribution into the municipal employee retirement system that the state runs. The number that's here is what was telegraphed to us last year in terms of what the requested percentage increase was going to be. This is about the same time of year that the MERS Board is looking at what the contributions would be, and then they would tell us what our contribution is. So at least in the past two years, the MERS Board has come in with a requested contribution increase, which is lower than what has been telegraphed to us previously, so there may be an opportunity to amend this line once we hear more from them, but I don't have a number to tell you now beyond what we were told at the end of last fiscal year. year. Police Pension is contribution to the police retirement plan as calculated by our actuary. It's been the town's policy to fund what the actuary tells us to put in and not play games with underfunding that. Workers' Compensation is our expected premium associated with providing workers' comp insurance. Our carrier is Karma. They are informing us that there is a rate reduction coming through. So you'll see that that line item is dropping compared to the prior year. If you remember when we presented the budget, the superintendent touched on sort of a similar line that within their budget, their workers' comp is going down too. They also have Karma as their carrier. So there's assumption harmony between the town and the Board of Ed. Health Insurance is proposed to increase. Both the town and the Board of Ed are in the same program, which is the State Partnership Plan. That has a projected increase. We're going based on the best information we have available at this time. Just like MERS, we're waiting for a definitive increase to come out of the state comptroller's office to tell us where rates will be landing going into the next fiscal year. Given the changeover in who the state comptroller is, I'm sure there's a little bit of a delay, but we normally get a heads up on that one also, so we know where to position our benefit cost. The number is also up because we're actually assuming a cost for healthcare benefits for the town planner, which is an added position. When the planner was originally proposed in the budget previously, the town did not budget funds for benefits for that position or social security for that position. It only budgeted salary. So with the council's desire to have the position in, we already went over the salary part of the budget, this is the benefits part of that position. Secretaries for Boards and Commissions, Pension Plan Fire Department, that's our participation in the plan that provides a benefit to eligible firefighters. Again, calculated by the actuary who's telling us what to put in. Salaries for Secretaries for Boards and Commissions, this pays for individuals that help prepare minutes for the different boards and commissions at town. Unemployment Compensation, we are at risk as an employer to have to pay unemployment comp when people move on. So the number went up a bit last year, perhaps in relation to COVID. We're seeing it stabilize, so a lower dollar amount is proposed for '22, '23 than what we've seen in the past. Legal expenses, our travel expense is no longer a line item because it's now cost allocated out into individual departments. Legal Services, at one point in time, all legal costs were spread out over three accounts. So it was in Legal Services, it was in Town Council, and there was a land use attorney line after going out, or a personnel union attorney line. So we went out, we hired a new town attorney that was able to encompass all of those expenses. So all of those expenses are now wrapped up in the single line item of Town Council, which reduced our net expense on legal fees. We are carrying a number that's reflective of both the monthly cost to maintain the town attorney by retainer, as well as any associated expense for litigation. And coming out of the reval year, we have a number of cases that are in litigation at this point in time. Added Accounting Services, the cost for a third-party audit for the town. That's the number that they gave us when they bid it. Land Records Index Audit, this is an audit that takes place in the town clerk's office to make sure that things are filed on the land records properly. Insurance other than employee benefits is so-called package insurance, property, auto, liability, employment practices, cyber, and the like. So here, the number is up. Again, we anticipated cyber was going to be a little bit more expensive. Some of our other lines we're seeing increase. I'm sure the headlines in the news don't necessarily give insurance underwriters the ability to sleep calmly at night without trying to squeeze more money out of insureds. We have higher-than-normal exposures, so that rates us a little bit higher because we're a coastal community. So this is the numbers that we're looking at now. We don't normally get firmer numbers on insurance until closer to the end of the fiscal year when we're coming in for our final renewals. So this is based on the best information today. Advertising is just that, cost for legal notices, personnel ads, bids, and the like. And Report is cost produced in the report, so we've been pushing the cost down on that to control content, make it more online, reduce print runs, so that we're not left with boxes of excessing reports to find their way into the dumpster. Electricity is the cost for the electricity as a commodity, so there's no change from the prior year because the price is locked in. Heat Water is our cost for those utilities. Copier Equipment Supplies Infrastructure, that's been zeroed out. As we transitioned and put all copy expense into IT, this line item has been zeroed out because it's no longer necessary. Bank Fees are costs that we carry for banking with entities like Bank of America. When interest rates were higher, they used to have compensating balances, which were sufficient to cover their costs to, for our banking needs. With low interest rates, fees became more popular than compensating balances, so that's the cost to bank. Miscellaneous Expenditures is a collection of special arrangements that we have. There's a property that the town rents to provide parking for baseball and other small expenses that are included in the miscellaneous expenditures account. Board of Assessment Appeals is the cost of that commission to do its business every March. Special Events is cost for what we contribute into special events that take place in town. Last Line Item is Carrying Costs Associated with Pearson. So we started to pull the costs out of Public Works so that we could account for all the carrying costs associated with Pearson in a singular line item, so that we know how much we're spending carrying Pearson. And should it not be part of the town's portfolio, or moves into another department, or whatever, it's not buried into Public Works' number. It's a number that stands alone as is. So that's General Government Other. If there's no questions on that budget?
I got a question, Carl, just in general, for the whole, the whole town budget. When we started, you said that you cut 653,892, you know, from, from all the town department requests?
Capital, capital and operating, yes.
Oh, both, okay.
It's in my message, it says capital and operating.
So do you have, do you, I don't, I didn't see it in here when I looked through it. Do you have like a rolled up version of which town departments that was cut from? I think it'd be a useful gauge because...
It's, it's in here. So I flagged at every budget, each, each one from last time we met and tonight, when I deviated from the department request where there were cuts on the operating side. So it's in the budget, and I've commented on it verbally at each budget we've gone through thus far.
So the difference between Request and Recommended?
Correct. So the column that says FY '23, 2223, Request is what the department request came in at. Managers Recommended reflects revisions made at my level.
Okay.
And then the next iteration would show Town Council Recommended, which would be encompassing of whatever amendments the council makes at its level. And then Referendum would be, hopefully we only one referendum, but that would show final approval of what goes to the public voter. And we will get into the capital changes right after we do debt. So I won't go through the process of delineating principal and interest, just focus on the consolidated page. There really is no latitude to amend this. This is like your mortgage, you pay it. You don't, you don't normally choose not to pay your mortgage. So it is what it is. The town agreed through referenda to issue debt for different projects. This is the cost that we have to carry annually for those projects that were approved and financed through bonding. So in this town, we break it out between Board of Ed and Town. You've got the interest and principal expense associated with debt that was uniquely tied to Board of Education projects. Last major project was the morgue and school. And then the principal interest for projects that were approved by the voters for the town, which have been of more of an infrastructure nature. You were bonding paving of roads historically. There's some bridge work in here where the town was leveraging outside grants, so more infrastructure-related expenses. On the town side is also lease. This is lease purchasing, so this is our lease payments associated with the two Public Works capital leases for heavy equipment that were utilized for them, as well as the tapering of leases for police department vehicle replacement, which was added to replace the rolling stock at the police department. So the bottom line of debt, as I said earlier, is will go down. The amortization schedule shows a reduction. There was a reduction last year. We were taking refunding opportunities to put different maturities in at lower interest rates, which gave us a net savings. So last year, the Board of Ed had an increase in its debt service, and the town had a reduction. This year in front of you, it's now the reverse with the different maturities changing as we take opportunities to refund our debt, to pull the bottom line down. I know that's not the way it's been presented in the newspaper and other places, but you're better off just looking at the bottom line. The town agreed and made these community decisions to fund these projects, not one group versus the other, so it's really the bottom line reflects the will of the entire town. This is, this is our mortgage payment. All right, next up is Capital. So there's, there's a lot going on in Capital, which requires some discussion. You've got a significant amount of backup detail. It's about this thick. So those were the pages that came in from individual departments with what their requests were. I had them right up, providing more detail than what you've had in the past, so that you can read at your leisure what their capital needs are, as well as what the priorities were for the departments. There's a description in here as to whether it's preserving, sort of keeping an asset together status quo, or whether it's aspirational for trying to expand and push the envelope on services. So here, the spreadsheet's a little different than what we saw on the operating budget. So you've got one column that says Actual Capital, which is what has been funded. Departments were asked to flag those line items that could be reallocated. Historically, what the town has done is go through a process to carry over projects after the fiscal year, after the budget is set. So if a project remains unexpended, the council will remove its authorization for the project. The monies flow into sort of any black ink that we had at the end of the year, which then finds its way to fund balance. So what I'm trying to do in this process this year is those that, dollars that are available to be reallocated, take some of those, set up the council for separate actions to deauthorize the project as originally envisioned, and then reallocate it into funding a new project. So I have cut projects with the notion that the council would take further action to reallocate excess idle dollars now to make a project move forward. So I'm trying to get capital work done without putting additional burden on the back of taxpayers and using dollars that have already been taxed. So you've got the Ask, you've got Town Managers' Projects to be paid for by cash surplus. I like that language, but that's the lingo that's been used here. It's paid for out of fund balance is the more traditional way to look at it rather than cash. And then Town Managers' Recommended Capital, that's all projects that are approved or recommended for approval. The column that says Paid For By Cash Surplus, those are the costs that I'm proposing be funded out of an appropriation of fund balance. So when I presented the budget to you in the message, it spoke to a little over 1.3 million being used for fund balance to pay for capital. That column would sum up to that 1.3 million to be funded out of fund balance. The rest are proposed to be funded either by taxation or reallocating dollars we've already taxed for and using it elsewhere. So first up is the Fire Department. You have, out of the Fire Department in your stack that is about this thick, is Five Years, which is what I asked everybody to do. So kudos to the Fire Department for coming through with a five-year plan, which laid out what their anticipated expenses were going to be from a capital perspective long term. So it's beyond just the year that's immediately in front of you. So I've got Funding in here to continue putting dollars into the Apparatus Replacement Reserve as we continue to use that as our savings account to help fund future purchases of fire equipment, which arguably are on a pricey end, as we all now know from the last workshop. Next up were three, we'll call it smaller items, which is Continued Funding of Personal Protective Equipment for Firefighters. This would be the turnout gear that you see them in. Those do age out over time and are somewhat sized to the individual, so as new people come on to become volunteers, they need proper fitting equipment. And then those that have been volunteers for a number of years, their equipment will age out and they need replacement sets of turnout gear. So this is part of a regular, consistent funding plan where we set aside dollars for PPE for firefighters. Rescue Equipment is a request to provide, and if you saw it in the plan, and you see it pops up every so often, is getting a regular line item that helps fund individual pieces of rescue equipment that are needed by the Fire Department in their emergency response. So things that might come to mind would be ropes used for extraction. Jaws of Life is another example of sort of the rescue equipment. Thermal Imaging Camera, this is a request for two thermal imaging cameras to be used. It's an important tool that's used for Fire Departments to be able to see in a building where there may be a person, or help them understand what's going on before they go into a scene to attack a fire. The 100,000 in Attack Hose actually is something that can be removed. That's a data entry error at the department request level. That is not being requested in FY '22, '23. Again, your stack about this thick suggests that it's in a future year, not '22, '23. And the Fire Chief is fine if those dollars are removed. Perhaps he would like it reallocated toward the Equipment Replacement Reserve, but it is a cuttable, a cuttable amount, just to, in all transparency. Police Department is next. So there's three items proposed to be funded. First is Patrol Vehicles. I gave you the Proposed Vehicle Replacement Schedule. So that's two vehicles moving out of the fleet and two new vehicles coming into the fleet. The Mako Vehicle is replacing the minivan that is used by the Mako at present with a newer vehicle to support his duties to collect animals. Radio System, we put a million dollars in that. Put a million dollars here. I was proposing, as you will remember from our ARPA discussion, to take 300,000 as lost revenue, utilize that to fund part of the radio project. This would be providing a balance of another 750. We're trying to ladder this expense in over several years. So it has a couple of components. First is replacing the console, which all the dispatch work takes place from. That is no longer serviced by the manufacturer. That is no longer serviced by the manufacturer, and if it fails, we have a major communications problem. So we're trying to replace that. We need to replace the individual subscriber units, which are the handheld radios used by police, fire, EMS, and Public Works. We have our own stock of them. We have to replace them and start purchasing them. And we have access to Madison, who already updated their radios. And since our chief works with their chief on a regular basis, we can get access to their excess stock for replacement if need be. And then we also are looking at trying to make sure we're covering as much of the town as possible, so there's some communication tower projects. All in, we're still waiting for finalized numbers from the consultant. It's in the order of magnitude of about 4 million, so this is something we're trying to squeeze in over time, trying to do it on a pay-as-you-go basis and not make it a bonding issue. So you'll see more of this going forward. That's it for PD. Next up is Public Works. So Public Works is divided across a couple of areas. Some of it is stuff that is dedicated to just the department. Other projects are what we're calling more town-wide type expenses that are spread out and address things outside of the traditional umbrella of Public Works, but are part of our portfolio of buildings. This will also be the first budget to call your attention to that involves reallocation of prior year funding. So you've got the priorities as submitted by the department. So the number one priority under the Public Works umbrella is replacing the heavy-duty dump. Quest is at $220,000. I have pushed that through as a proposed expenditure and am proposing that that be paid for out of allocation of fund balance. The number two proposed project was a grounds mower in at $30,000. Pushed that across also as an approved project. I did not propose that for funding under fund balance, as it is likely to be a shorter-lived piece of equipment. And my focus has been trying to use fund balance for things that are going to be longer-lived. The third highest priority was the medium dump with plow and sander at $85,000. That's proposed to be funded and funded out of fund balance. Fourth priority was a paint machine at $8500. That too has been pushed through for potential funding. On the townwide basis, first up is an allocation for roads. So this is part of getting us into the habit of funding on a pay-as-you-go basis dollars for paving and road reconstruction rather than bonding. I've said this to prior council and tell you also, the practice of bonding roads makes little or no sense, because once you've paid it off after 20 years, you have to go back and pave the road. So you've got nothing for your money, because you pay for the cost of paving the road plus 20 years of interest. So this marks a policy change to try and fund on a regular basis roadworks. Done that over the past two budgets. This continues that practice of setting aside money for paving, trying to work you into a number that is more reflective of the study that was done to evaluate the town's roads. There's a lot of work that's got to get done to get us up to that dollar amount, so I'm trying to do it in slowly and make it as pain-free, if that's the right word, as possible. Second priority on townwide was putting funding in for sidewalks. So we did do a study to look at conditions of sidewalks. We have a report that speaks to conditions of trying to maintain what is existing. $50,000 is in there for some engineering work to help define the scope, as well as construction expense, once we get clear delineation on what it's going to cost to prepare some of this stuff. Some of it can be done with grinding it down, where you've got a tree hump. This does not envision new sidewalks. It's just envisions maintaining our current set of sidewalks, which is not the easiest thing in the world for us to maintain. There will be other sidewalks coming online from other grants that have been funded. We did receive a large grant through the COG level to provide sidewalks going out towards Westbrook. We got the grant for installing it. We did not get a grant to pay for the engineering. The town paid for the engineering. We're waiting for the DOT to finish the land acquisition, so that there is an easement or right-of-way in order to put the sidewalk in. And then once they're done with their land acquisition phase, then you would have, that would mark some new sidewalk going in. We're not at a point where, at least at staff level, that we've got the staff time to maintain new sidewalks, since we are plowing an awful lot of those sidewalks, rather than the traditional municipal response, which is having the maintenance and the removal of snow going on the homeowner. Clinton does it itself, or has Public Works do it, which is a staff. Third highest priority is some roof repair to the library. This is something that was flagged in the last budget. It's being pushed through here for approval, as well as funding under fund balance. So this is a coating that would help preserve the existing membrane surface on the library roof. It gives us longer life on the existing roof and continues to keep it in a good state of repair, so there are no leaks in the library. Four is replacing the air conditioning unit in the land juice office. So that's basically one of these things that you see in the wall here. That is one of the older ones. The request was to take it out, replace it with something that does both air conditioning and heating, to help control the temperature in the office. So I cut it at my level, but my process and recommendation to you is that you deauthorize the balance that is under the chipper and the balance that is available under the lift rolling. There's 13.5 there. Take 12 and allocate that as a council motion, separate from the budget, to fund the air conditioning replacement. And then 1500 can go back to the bottom line. Fifth up is the Elliott House. So for your reference, the Elliott House is the building next to us in that direction, where the Chamber of Commerce is. It was moved here and put on the town's campus. It needs some attention. It is in here to call your attention to it. It was flagged last year. The proposal here involves siding the building to encapsulate it. We have some concerns about the paint that is on the current clavering, which is probably lead-based paint. So this was a proposed encapsulation of the building to make it more presentable. There has been some work done on a piecemeal basis to try and repair damage to the building. So it's in our portfolio of buildings. It needs to be maintained. It's not a super high priority. I proposed cutting it. You may feel differently. Just so you understand the scope of work and what that results in. The last item was carpet replacement in tax and assessors' office. That's just removed, as our focus right now is doing land juice and updating that, which was a previously approved project that we're trying to find time to get done with Public Works. Public Works would do the labor for this. There just isn't a slot of time in order to do that. There's also a request for painting to be done in tax, and I can't be doing the carpet and painting at the same time. So it's a cut to reflect capacity within Public Works to do all of this work. Public Works doing it saves us money versus contracting it out and having that at a slightly higher cost than the town. Next up, water pollution control. It is not here. They had a request in, as you will recall from our ARPA discussion, that was proposed to be funded under ARPA, and that was passed through to the town meeting as an expense there, so it doesn't reflect here in this budget. Technology is next. So the top priorities were network firewall replacement and installing two-factor authentication. Both of these are cybersecurity-related capital requests. They are cut. And again, you'll recall our ARPA discussion. We put in a motion to the town meeting to provide ARPA funding to pay for cyber enhancements. So this would pay, those are the two projects on the Town side. There's a similar scope of work on the Board of Ed side, and that would fund beefing up our cybersecurity protection, which, if we can get that accomplished before 7.1, helps us with the renewal of cyber insurance, which we already discussed in the prior budget. Next up was police car tablet replacements. This is updating technology within the cruisers, so that's proposed to be funded. Security camera at the Police Department is proposed to be funded, replacing, this is the sort of the laptops and workstations. We've had a regular line item that keeps replacing computers as they age out, so that also is proposed to be funded. Next up is parking rec. Parking rec came in with three capital requests. Two were proposed for funding. So first is the track reseal. It's a total $70,000 project, so we're proposing to fund it in two allotments, $35,000 in '22, '23, and then another $35 would be in '23, '24. This is sort of a must-do in order to maintain the integrity of the track and keep it in the condition that everyone enjoys, so we don't have a major capital expense to replace the track. So it's more funding of preventative maintenance. Equally high priority is heser pond dredging. Had a lengthy conversation on this with the rec director. This is a project that's been studied and looked at a number of times. It hasn't been studied more recently. It is a pond that has issues associated with it. It's not just dredging the pond, but there's a dam, and the dam is ultimately going to need some work. It's not that it's not a meritorious project, it's just that it needs to be a little bit more of a study. The $200,000 figure comes from a study that's six-plus years old at this point in time, so it doesn't really reflect current expense. It doesn't reflect the current volume of material that will need to be dredged out of the pond. And we likely should have a more updated hazardous materials assessment of what is in there as material to be pulled out, so we know how much it is going to cost to take that material out and deposit it wherever that type of material goes. So it needs, there needs to be a little bit more analysis, so we know how much money we're talking about. And then it could be a multi-year set aside to build up the funding necessary to do the dam work and the environmental work to clean up the pond and restore the aquatic habitat. Last item was for floor replacement of a high rock at $5,000. That's been pushed through for funding. Shellfish came in with three requests. Only one is through at my level for funding, so their highest priority was the boat. They have a boat that they utilize. It is occasionally used by others. Been requested for a couple of years now. I've pushed it off, but now we're at a point where it's probably best that it be updated and replaced. The other requests are things that fall under the category of shellfish's mission, goals, and aspirations to enhance the shellfishing environment in Clinton Harbor. So that's the Upweller Dock, which is envisioned either as something the private sector would utilize, or the commission failing that to help create seed stock for clams, which would reduce their operating expense. I don't have a return on investment calculation yet for how long it's going to take to get the return on investment, nor the business model of how the commission would operate that, so for that reason, I cut it. The shellfish barn, this is, the intent is to put something at the beach, which is going to be more educational in nature, to help the public understand the environment and shellfish's role in that. That's cut. It's not clear where that's going, nor whether it has a current approval from Park and Rec to be on the site. There is a trailer there. So this, there's a little bit of history that needs to be unpacked for that one. So again, it's not ready to go, so for that reason, I cut it. Library came in with a capital request to repave the parking lot. The parking lot has some challenges. If you use the library, the trees that are in the islands are at a point where they're breaking the surface. The roots are breaking the surface of the parking lot. It's in tough shape, so this would be a total reconstruction of the parking lot is what we're talking about. It is town-owned property, so therefore it becomes a town capital expense. The library doesn't own the building. We own the building. So this is an acknowledgement of our expense as a landlord, so I pushed it through for funding. It's also proposed to be funded out of fund balance, as expectation would be to get a long life out of the new parking lot's surface. Board of Ed is next. So Board of Ed, as for your reference, reflects conversations that have taken place between the superintendent and myself for what's doable, what's not doable, if there's an opportunity to take funding from what, right now, the Board of Ed is projecting as surplus that they would have unexpended at the end of the fiscal year. Capital projects were discussed as to whether there are things that could be accomplished before 6:30, when the fiscal year closes, so that it could be taken care of out of their operating budget. We also had a conversation about reallocating dollars and trying to come up with what their priorities are for what can be funded. So starting at the top, there's a specific request to do some work in the Joel School to repair and resurface the gym floor. That is coming in at $53,000, so that was proposed to be funded. Higher-level requests from the board. Elliott School, the request is to, again, refinish and repaint the gym floor. That's cut. It's cut under the logic that the balance that's available for roof replacement, which is $22,000, be reallocated to pay for a new capital project. So it's not new dollars, but a separate motion by the council to reallocate those dollars to fund the capital project going forward. Next, the next two were specific to the Morgan School. First is resurfacing the main floor A Wing. This was in the budget last year, but the higher priority was resurfacing the tennis courts at $63,000, which the schools use and public uses as a popular amenity. So resurfacing the main floor of the A Wing at Morgan was cut at my level. This is based on the expectation that the project could be funded and completed before June 30th by projected surplus and the Board of Ed. Resurfacing the tennis courts at $63,000 was cut under the assumption that putting money in that comes from further down, under BOE system-wide. You'll see there's $67,000 available as a balance under the Elliott Water Pipe. So the expectation is that a separate council motion would deauthorize the $67,000 under Elliott Water Pipe, and then appropriate 63 of that towards resurfacing the tennis courts. Elliott Water Pipe and then appropriate 63 of that towards resurfacing the tennis courts so that that project can be funded with pre-existing dollars. Moving away from school-specific expenses into district-wide expenses, a couple of other capital projects that were included. So on the higher priority end was funding computer upgrades and replacements, PA system replacement, security network replacements, maintenance equipment replacement, dealing with striking the parking lots, classroom shade replacements, electric power upgrades, and lavatory sink upgrades. So the classroom shade replacement has been cut under the assumption that it's a project that could be accomplished before June 30 and therefore paid for out of anticipated surplus in Board of Ed operating. The lavatory sink upgrade is cut as it's a lower priority and is not proposed to be funded in this, this cycle of the budget. So that's it for capital. So if you look at the total bottom line, in the blue column, 3.7 was requested. What I'm pushing through as proposed to be funded is 2.8 million, and then 2.8 million, 1.345 is proposed to be funded out of an allocation of fund balance. Any questions on capital?
Carl, as far as the fund balance goes, how much of this is going to fund balance? You've taken a long point, something, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's on the screen and it's the bottom line on capital. You'll see 1.345.
Okay, got it.
So that is proposed to come out of fund balance. Fund balance also appears in the revenue assumptions for the budget, and I am following the directive from a policy standpoint the council set previously of a desire to slowly taper that, bring fund balance in line with policy, but make sure we're doing it in fashion that allows those dollars to be available for future capital needs over a longer period of time. Capital is perhaps the biggest area that causes some angst as we try and maintain what we have that's existing. There's been an awful lot of deferred maintenance around town. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed because they haven't been funded, and trying to have those dollars available over a longer period of time makes sure that we have the means to address maintenance needs without either cutting it all and making it worse or putting it all on the backs of the taxpayer. Even the Budget Preference Survey, which I'm trying to get out of the school system, suggests the public's inclination is to cut capital, but I think you all appreciate that you just can't gut capital because that's maintaining our rolling stock, that's maintaining our buildings. If you cut capital, everything falls apart, you start to have bigger expenses. So the attempt is here, try and keep up with what we have so we're not turning out and bonding a ton of stuff. We're not following bad practice, which is what we've been trying to move away from, of bonding roads, leasing, rolling stock that exists for basically the length of lease and the like. So it's all about trying to get to a better budgetary practice.
Am I doing that correctly? You would be 5 million over the target on the unfunded balance. Would it be 5 million over the target? I don't know, I'm going to go backwards.
You would be, well, you got, based on the Finance Director's report that you get every month, she shows that we are 6.6 million roughly over policy. So you have 1.345 coming out here. On the revenue side, there's another quarter million, and then your last meeting decision to fund the balance of the fire apparatus was another 129,000 to come out of fund balance. So that puts you at 4.9 million over policy. And again, unless I hear otherwise, the council's stated desire was a slow burn rather than taking it down all at once. And so I built this funding plan around the direction I received from the council since then.
I wasn't there, but I certainly agree with that. But is there a need to raise the mill rate when we're 5 million over our target of 6?
Fund balance is used two ways in the budget. First is you have an appropriated fund balance and an applied fund balance. So what we have done in the past is have an appropriated fund balance, which appears as a consistent revenue line, which helps with controlling mill rate by bringing in additional revenues. So we're appropriating some of that. The rest of it is for capital. It would be bad budget practice to take fund balance and use it as a large revenue in order to defer a one-time tax increase. So if the intent is to use it, the policy advice I would give you would be to spend it on capital. Again, the council's direction was a slow burn to maintain an asset so that's available in future years. That's what I built this around. If the council has different feelings, wants to set a different policy directive, that's the feedback that you would have to give me and you would have to vote on for budget amendments that the council wants to push through to the public.
I definitely understand the slow burn, yes. But I also understand that this has been a particularly difficult year for middle class on gas and groceries and everything else. And it just bears some, and I'll be good at that.
So if that's, I mean, the other thing to think about is what's the target? We did do a 0% tax increase in the past, and the target was changed on me in the middle of the budget process with less than 24 hours to try and put together something. So that's why we had the September workshop, to give me direction so that I can incorporate it into this budget spending plan early, that there's some clear indication that sets up my ability to give you a budget that's a reasonable spending plan. You want to use it? That's the council's prerogative. I've tried to respond to the direction I was given in a reasonable time. If the council wants to give me direction that is new and different, that's fine. Having it sooner rather than later would be better, so that I'm not putting this together on the fly at the last minute, which I was trying to avoid by having this.
I apologize for your frustration. It's just that I wasn't here in September.
And this document takes a lot of time to put together, which is why it predates your election, because I'm looking for direction, superintendent's looking for direction, we're trying to put together spending plans. We both are setting wheels in motion far in advance of February 22nd, so we need to plan and prep accordingly. So this reflects the last direction that was given, which was the nexus to get it out of the council of financial forecasting. So this reflects that direction.
Discussions that we had as a council, obviously, I think everybody's aware of the fact of the financial stress is that a lot of people have. I mean, ultimately, you know, yes, we are the quasi-finance, you know, board here as it relates to all this, but the reality is, is that Carl works with the department heads and goes through the budgets and does a great job preliminarily, working with all the department heads, so that he knows when he presents something to us that it's, it's a fairly tight budget. I mean, there's really not much room to move. I mean, the thing that will, I mean, if you go through all of this and you understand it and you review it and you read it, there's, we're very limited to what we can, you know, there's not much here on an operational side. You know, we did add the town planner this year, which I think was a great idea to do, you know, but other than that, getting, trying to get a budget year after year down to a zero level is a difficult thing to do. You know, COVID obviously played a big impact in it the past couple of years, and that's what we did as a council, was to do the best we could. I mean, you know, so I mean, I think we just have to digest everything that we've gotten from these workshops and all the information that we've been provided, and then we have our discussions about, you know, the budget itself and where we want to be and where we want to do. You know, but I think we'll see ultimately, you know, what we've been presented is a great budget, and we have directed him in the direction on where the town needs to go. I think bringing in the town manager was for this purpose, is we have a professional running our town, knows how to run it, knows the finances of it, and is putting us in a direction where we can be successful as a town going forward, so that we're not strangle holding ourselves and doing things that, you know, in the past we may have done, and, you know, it may have worked, but unfortunately may have had something on the, on the opposite side that had a negative effect. So I think at this point, you know, we just kind of digest what we have and go through all of this.
So I think for rough math, just so that we're kind of aware of what the goalpost is, I'll take you back to the presentation I gave you when the budget was presented, which spoke to the value of a mill. So when you amend the budget, it's not just cutting for the sake of cutting, which is what I've tried to educate this council on, and what I've tried to educate every other elected board that I've dealt with over, well over 20 years of doing budgets, is you have to cut based on increments that move the needle on the mill rate. One one-hundredth of a mill is what you need to move the needle on the mill rate. So the number I gave you was 17,000. So you can only use fund balance for what you got as projects to be funded. So between what's proposed to be funded and the amount proposed to be funded out of fund balance leaves you with 1.5 million to be paid for out of taxation. So if you move the 1.5 and say it's, we're going to fund the whole thing out of fund balance, move that over. I have not cut the budget by enough to avoid a 0% tax increase. That's my back-of-the-cock-teel-napkin calculation. What you're asking me to do is to get to zero, to use fund balance to get to zero. I can only use fund balance as much as I have expenses for. So on capital, the amount I have expenses for is 1.5 million. So I can only use 1.5 million more of fund balance. 1.5 million more of revenue does not necessarily get you to one full mill reduction, and that's where we're at.
Well, one full mill is $870,000. I'm not necessarily asking for a full mill, but I'm just thinking that it could drop. But should, can we discuss this another time? I don't want to eat everybody's mouth.
Yes, the council has its discussion on the second. Your meeting with the Board of Ed on the 24th, so you have time to discuss it. I will be looking for direction on amendments on the second, beyond what's been discussed to date, to set the budget for, that goes forward to the public for a public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I think just from listening to Carrie, I'm not going to put words into your mouth, but, you know, I don't think we're talking about reviewing the whole budget. The budget is great. It's just that undesignedated bond and the increase in the mill rate and that relation and how the levers can be moved up and down.
Again, with March, we'll have that discussion.
Okay, I don't have a slide to show you for revenue, but you have it in your books. It should be the last page. So this is the whole, all the sources of revenue anticipated for supporting the budget. As was noted during the budget presentation, property tax is the lion's share of where revenue comes from. It is the only source of revenue aside from any fee revenue that the town can generate per state statute. So we are dependent on grants and aid that come from Hartford to reduce whatever our exposure is on taxation. So the top few lines reflect property tax-generated revenue, so current year levy, it's blank on your sheet because that comes around to a mill rate conversation, which is, the mill rate is driven by expenditures and revenue, so it's blank at present. I gave you an anticipated mill rate in the budget message and what that would generate for additional revenue. Prior year tax levy is usually something that comes forward on motor vehicles. Supplemental motor vehicle is capturing new cars, and tax interest fees is revenue generated by folks that don't pay on time. So that's up to reflect the recent trend of keeping that number down as revenue, but acknowledging the fact that there's been a high level of people that are carrying penalties for not paying on time. Next get into, next section gets into grants that are provided to us by the state. So our assumption going into this was that it would be status quo on funding. The state operates on a two-year budget. What the governor proposed last fiscal year assumed smoothing out and leveling of some of the formula grant programs, the largest of which is educational cost sharing. But the town does receive other programs. Some of these are funded by state bonding. So we're assuming that we're going to continue to get the $1,000 that we receive under Totally Disabled. We're assuming we're still going to get the $2,000 we get for the tax exemptions. Town Aid Road is a bond-funded program, or state bond-funded program. We are assuming that we're going to get the same that we got last year. That was included in the biennial budget. That's also where the governor's proposed budget he just gave to the General Assembly also puts Clinton. We assume level funding on LoSIP, Local Capital Improvement Program. That, it reflects where the governor's budget is. The pilot for state-owned property, we assume that that would be level funded. However, the governor's budget does not propose that be level funded. His budget actually has us receiving less than we received last year. So instead of 39, 398, the governor's budget proposes that at 37, oh, 71. So there's a $2,300 reduction in revenue based on where the governor's budget comes in for pilot payments. Property relief for veterans, we're assuming level funding. Grants for municipal projects, again, is assumed for level funding, and municipal stabilization grant is also assumed for level funding. So that reflects where the governor's budget came, came in. Civil preparedness is not really revenue generating line. Investment income, this is what we, what we generate from our dollars, so there's an uptick here over the, over the current fiscal year, reflecting what we see as the reality of what is being generated at present with current assumption of interest rates. WASAM Trust generates money on its own and provides funding to the town as part of the package that delivered this building. So the trust is able to generate more revenue to the town than it generated last year, so there's an uptick on that line item. Town property rentals, this still assumes a lower amount, so people are now getting back into the business of utilizing the building, so slowly we're getting our customer base back using buildings. Policy shift to not charge room rentals to nonprofits does pull down our number, so 3,000 is an achievable amount unless we're changing what we do by policy. Miscellaneous revenue is just that, it's not something we can predict on a regular basis. Then going down, you'll see applied fund balance for capital. So last year it was almost 2.3, it's down to 1.3 under the capital plan. Appropriated fund balance, we took it up to 350 last year as a one-timer to reflect the need to cushion revale, so it's going back down to 250, which is the historic dollar amount that's been used in the past. Again, those are based on maintaining some sense of consistency through the budget. Outside of those large revenue streams, the individual revenues that are created by departments, you've got the town clerk's fees for what she generates, the money's generated for people getting vital statistics. The bigger chunk of that is the real estate conveyance tax. We pulled that down going into the COVID recession, assuming we weren't going to see a lot of people moving. Clearly, a lot of people moved, so there was more money being generated in the conveyance tax. So we've been taking that up to what we think are achievable dollar amounts, assuming that. that there will be some continued activity in the real estate market, but not that it's going to go like it was in the past year. Police-generated fees are smallish. The fine revenue is not anticipated to be terribly high, based on where the state is going as a policy for providing fines and the like. Dog boarding fees is a de minimis revenue stream. Contracted services, this is where individuals are utilizing police for, we'll call it a road job, because that's normally where it is. So this would be when the police are directing traffic or providing for public safety for when the water company is doing its work in the road. That is reflected here as revenue stream. Public Works generates revenue by transfer station fees as well as the value of scrap metal that goes off to a private hauler. So when we see large volumes of metal coming to us or the market for metal goes up, there's an opportunity to generate more revenue. Transfer station fees, that's whatever we generate for folks using the transfer station that pay the fee. Senior citizens do not pay a fee to use the transfer station. Planning and development are the fees generated by development activity. We've always been conservative on this and not trying to juice it based on one-time construction so that we've got more of a level process when we're looking at these fees and we're not fluctuating them up and down annually. We're trying to have some consistency, which is good conservative budget practice and something the town has consistently done. So planning and zoning fees, we're keeping that flat. ZBA fees, we're also keeping that flat. And the wetlands also reflects flat. Fire marshal fees, this is a new revenue stream. The fire marshal charges a fee now for things that fall under his purview. It's disconnected from building fees. Because the building official looks at everything, the fire marshal does not look at residential, he looks at more commercial activity. So his fee structure is a little different. And then building fees is just that, people pulling permits for improvements to their home. It's obviously spiked during COVID with a lot of people at home. We're not assuming that that is a sustainable model going forward, and again, conservative revenue estimates. Next up is beach passes. So it's sort of in line with historical practice of what is collected at the beach. Shellfish license transfer in. So this is, as I noted during the budget presentation, we are transferring funds in from a shellfish account into the general fund. The shellfish account receives revenue from individuals that are taking shellfish permits out. In discussions with Finance Director, we're moving those, some of those dollars in, which is more reflective of trying to reduce the taxpayers' exposure to seed and pay for shellfish stock, which not every Clinton resident uses, not a towner's use. So we should use some of that revenue back in the general fund in order to pay for that activity. Launch passes is revenue generated by harbor management for folks putting their boats in the water. And they were slow in submitting their expenses, but also slow in presenting their revenues. We think that that, the launch pass revenue could probably go up by 10,000. So that could go up. So net, after you take out our reduction from the state side on pilot at 2,300, we're up by a small amount. Boat moorings, these are people that are paying by the linear foot to utilize the docks down in the harbor. Assuming that that's going to be flat. ECS is the big one at 5.1 million. Governor is proposing that that be level funded. There's always discussion up in Hartford that maybe it'll go up, maybe the General Assembly will put more money in it. It doesn't usually shake out that way at the end of session. This is a formula-based grant, so the state would have to go in and monkey with the formula. It doesn't really work well. You'll notice that the dollars have been going down over the past history of the budget. That is reflects the last change that went through, which was, which has the net effect in a town like Clinton, of reducing what we get from ECS, but increasing it in other urban districts. So this reflects the governor's budget, and then we'll let whatever plays out in the General Assembly play out. Special education reimbursement is the state's contribution towards our special education expense. By statute, the state is supposed to pay way more than it does. However, the state chooses not to fulfill its funding obligations, neither does the federal government, so it falls on municipalities to pay for special education. So this reflects what we get back under their formula. So we basically have to spend four and a half times what we normally spend on these children before the state kicks in. So it's part of educating the youth of Clinton and an expense we have to carry on behalf of the state of Connecticut. Based on, and it's paying us one year off. So based on what we're seeing as trend in this fiscal year, we're trying to forecast what next year's payment from the state would be. So we're taking it back up to 407, which is where we were for 2021. We were forecasting with people moving in and out of district and changes on special ed, that for the current fiscal year, it was going to come in lower. So based on feedback from the board, we're seeing that it could be back up to the 407 amount, and that's what we've assumed here for the budget. Beyond that, that's it really for the revenue stream of what's there. Tax is obviously the big point of discussion, because that's the single largest revenue stream that the town has. Any questions on revenue?
Just a couple. Do you expect us to use the entire 250 in the allocation from appropriated surplus measures we're offering?
We acknowledge it. The whole thing is a revenue. So if other line items come in in excess of what's been, so if our revenue net is coming in higher, it still goes in as a revenue, but it gets washed out with all of the in-excess of budget that finds its way back into fund balance and replenishes it.
Is there any, is there a first chance where we're going to see money from the P-plus again?
No, that was yet another change in state law. When it was created, these values were supposed to get all of it.
We got 95,000 the first year.
Correct. So they cut it, and now it only goes, it kept getting cut and cut and cut and cut.
But then they cut, it stayed part and part and part.
Correct. So we were supposed to get all of it, then we got 70% of it, then it just kept shrinking and the state kept sucking up more of it. So whatever little is left goes to the towns that host and are immediately impacted. Correct. So those few towns out that way get a specific allocation of whatever is left that the state didn't take for itself.
They have to pay for their schools.
And that's the acknowledgement. So I think like some of those towns have English as a second language and they're navigating 10-plus languages for the people that are working at the casinos. So there's a logic to it, it's just not what was expected when it originally rolled out. I have not assumed anything in here on the governor's proposal to cap the mill rate for motor vehicles. That does impact us. His budget assumes a number which is based on the total.
It's 29,000.
The prior grant list, not the grant list this budget is based on. So, and it assumes the prior mill rate, not the current mill rate that's proposed here. So there is a gap that needs to be filled.
Is that going to be something we'll see a year behind all the time then? Maybe?
The governor presented it as it was going to make the municipalities whole. I think everyone has looked at it saying, we're not being made whole.
I stand away from him, the voice lightning.
It needs, the program, if it is to go forward, needs to be amended so that we truly are made whole. If the state is going to do it on a fall behind basis, then the burden falls on real estate to fill the gap that's not being filled by the state program. And based on our last conversation about Boheken Pequa, there's a question as to whether the state will be able to be a funding partner on this consistently, or whether that's going to change as time goes on and leave us short. So that's a little bit of a hesitation. The governor's proposal also changes the depreciation on motor vehicles, the process by which motor vehicles are evaluated. So that will pull down the grant list structurally, which is not accounted for in any of this making everyone whole calculus. So as proposed, we're short, and then it's building in a process which will permanently make us short. And even if there's an attempt to make us whole, we're always going to be falling behind. So it's something that needs intervention by the General Assembly.
I know we haven't gotten any money from Morgan Trust for the last couple of years. Will we get any this year? And is that something that's in the budget or because it's restricted, it's planned outside of the budget?
It's not reflected as a town revenue because the town, us, don't receive it. It goes to the Board of Education for.
And it's restricted, is what they spend the money on.
Correct. So those are dollars that are not reflected here as a town budget revenue because it's not, it's not our money. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Carl. All right, we will see everyone on the 24th with the Board of Ed. Thank you.